Good evening and welcome to the U.S. D290 Board of Education meeting. It is October 11th at 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, do a roll call. Linda Alderman.
Present.
Chris Cunningham is absent tonight. Julie Dandrio, present. Susan Moore.
Present.
Thank you. Melodya Payne.
Present.
Shandel Olmstead, she is absent tonight. And Harold Wingert. Harold. Okay, perfect. So we have five board members present. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
You'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Harold, are we approving? And Susan, okay. All right. So that passes 5-0. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Harold, are you in? Okay.
Julie, I'm watching for you if you want to.
Oh, yes. They all look up there thinking so much. All right, so that passes 5-0 as well. We are down to comments from the public. Parents and taxpayers of USC 290 who desire to address the board on any topic related to board work are welcome to do so at this time. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to more than five minutes. To appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern and to supplement for both presentations with written reports if necessary or desired. Public comments critical of an individual are not acceptable. Please note the board will listen to the public comment but will not respond. The board may direct the superintendent to follow up at a later date on questions asked or concerns raised. We have four comments this evening. The first one will be Bristi Foltz. If you could please come to the front and state your name and address, please.
Bristi Foltz, 1239 South Mulberry. It's that time of the month again where the parents and citizens of the county get to come forward and present information to the board, information that might not otherwise be presented or researched. So here we are tonight to educate the Board of Education. There are a couple of people on the board that do have common sense and think rationally, and we appreciate that. All of us out here appreciate that you think critically of the situation that we're in. I'll start with the numbers and facts because those cannot be misinterpreted. Twenty-five thousand five hundred and forty-four people in this county as of last Friday. I believe there's eighty-three active cases, which means COVID positive in this county is point three percent. I report on this every time because my only fear is you're going to put masks back on the faces of kindergarteners. My kids are old enough and they will tell you they're not going to wear a mask. They'll stand up for their rights and not comply with mandates and testing. You know who won't and can't are the kindergarteners, the first graders, the second graders. They can't and won't stand up because they were taught in school not to. And over this last week, it's been very apparent that they are scared to take their masks off. Scared because I've talked to other parents and the parents tell their children they can take their masks off, and the kids are scared too because they've been in school for a year and a half now and afraid. Let's continue to not mask our kids, please. One of you, please, ask Dr. Cobb how we get out of this. How do we get out of the situation that we're in when we have a COVID positive rate of point three percent, but that's still too high and we're still putting the responsibility of COVID transmission on the school district? He should even be asking that. Like, why is he responsible? Why are you responsible for answering to the health department when that's their job? Keep the health department out of our schools. I did a little more digging today and found out that there's twelve thousand one hundred and fifty-six people fully vaccinated in Franklin County and thirty-four hundred people have already had COVID, which makes it sixty-one percent of this county has either had COVID or have been fully vaccinated. And we're going to test and maybe potentially put masks back on our kids. I can't, I can't trust that the board members won't decide to switch at any point like they did in August. I would like to bring to the board, maybe one of you can amend the motion for a modified quarantine for the students of this county and of this district so they don't have to test to stay in school. There are other counties around us that have a modified quarantine where they're not requiring their students to test if they've been exposed. And they can go to school and be in school in person while wearing a mask for the seven to ten days, but not requiring testing. So I would really appreciate, and I think a lot of the other parents back here, raise your hand if you don't want your kids tested. Hi? So they can see them? We don't want our kids tested. We want them to stay in school. We realize that there's a risk. The risk is not significant. Point three percent is not significant enough to test our kids to be in school. Let's see, how much time do I got? I've got a minute left. I ask you to think proactively. Where are we going from today and tomorrow? When will we stop the testing? When will we say, "We're not even going to say masks is a thing anymore"? When is this going to happen? Because it rests on the school board at this point to determine if we're going to continue this. COVID's not going away. Do you plan as a school board to continue to test kids next year and the year after? Do you want to continue to see smileless children covered, their faces covered? Is that something that you guys want to do? I know you can't answer me, but I want you to think critically. This is not going away. It's not going away. Please, stop the madness in our county, in our school district. The only way to stop this is if you guys stand and hold the line with us and stop the ridiculous mandates, stop the masks, stop, just stop. It's not going away unless you decide it stops.
Thank you. Next comment is from Rebecca Schmoy. Rebecca, if you would come up, please, and state your name and your address.
All right. Rebecca Schmoy, 1526 South Cedar, here in Ottawa. Ladies and gentlemen of board, it's always good to see you guys. So we've been seeing a lot of each other lately. The last time we were here, we had a discussion on public comments, and that's up for discussion and possible action this evening. Last time we were here, I very much appreciated those school board members who stood up for First Amendment rights and for public interaction. We cannot, as a community, we cannot thank you enough for making sure that you guys are still in communication with your constituents. Now, the discussion was tabled, even though we had a forum, the discussion had been tabled. Since that time, there's been a lot of talk in the news about the National School Board Association and how they have addressed the current presidential administration and the Department of Justice. And they are attempting to intimidate parents from being involved in school board meetings. They are actually going so far as trying to call upset parents of the community domestic terrorists. All of us have access to this news, and it's, it's been everywhere. And I know as school board members, you guys, I am sure, have been trying to keep tabs on what's going on as far as this kind of stuff nationally. There is a lot of names being thrown around, and I am sure that I have been called a few names. And that's okay with me. We're all adults. It doesn't bother me any. What does bother me is the idea that a National School Board Association, who you guys are affiliated with by default, they're calling your constituents and neighbors domestic terrorists if they come in and passionately disagree with their school boards. There are two names that you guys can call me that are accurate and always going to be true. Your neighbor and your constituent. I, as your constituent, am asking you guys to please, please get out ahead of this, make a public announcement on behalf of the school board. Just go on record that our right to disagree about policy and procedure is protected and that our First Amendment right of speech, press, to peaceably assemble, to petition, and the redress of grievances will be respected. I'm going to repeat that. Make a public statement that our right to disagree will be protected and our First Amendment rights will be respected. We are your neighbors and your constituents, and we will remember whether or not you stood up to those who called us domestic terrorists because we disagree with you, or whether you stood by because your feelings were hurt by harsh words and a tone of voice that you don't recognize. We are your neighbors, and I, I know, being as though I've been at the meetings that we've had this school year, that no one here, even if we disagree, no one here has done anything except for being professional as far as being up here. We are demanding answers. We are demanding accountability. You are our public servants. We have hired you guys to do a job on our behalf. I'm just asking that you respect your constituents and neighbors enough that when your time on the board is through and you guys are back sitting in these seats, that you will know beyond a shadow of a doubt that your right to disagree is protected and your First Amendment is respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. The next person up on our list is David Sprinkle. If you'd please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. David Sprinkle, 1222 East State Street, here in town. So much to cover. First, I want to start by saying I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I thought it was a great meeting. I thought there was a lot of good discussion. I thought there was a lot of topic, and I'm sorry that I missed it. The first thing I wanted to say is I know on the agenda tonight is the, the public comments. And I know that some of the requests were to strike some things, change some things, table it. I'm an example today of why I was unable to meet that 12 o'clock deadline, okay? I wasn't for sure if I was going to be here or not due to a kids program that didn't get changed until 1:00 due to rain. So me showing up at the last minute to speak is a prime example of why that needs to be squashed. I think you're going to disenfranchise a lot of folks in the community by forcing them to a specific timeline. The other thing I want to talk about, and I'm, I'm like the rest of you, guys, I'm over this COVID thing. The country right now is so divided that my focus is locally because we have to protect one another. And I don't care if you're vaxxed, if you're unvaxxed, if you wear a mask, if you don't wear a mask, if you like boys, if you like girls, I don't care. Don't force me to do what you would do. I'm going to hug you, I'm going to love you, and I'm going to take care of you the same. And I think if everybody would take that approach, we're going to be, we're going to be okay in this community. I have some concerns about the transparency and the way things are done. I know that you guys have your secret executive meetings where you discuss things, and then they get thrown on the agenda to vote. We don't find out until that morning what's on the agenda. We're given a few hours to kind of skim through it and raise some questions and concerns, and then we're given five minutes to talk about it, and then we sit and watch you guys vote. I don't know of a single school board member who is supposed to be our representatives reach out to the community and say, "These are things that we've discussed. These are things that are going on." What's some feedback? I read about the school buses. Not saying that we don't need them, but what are we doing with the, are we adding to the fleet? Are we getting rid of the old school buses? What are we doing with the old school buses? I know when I take my old car in to get a new one, I get a trade value on it. That wasn't in the budget for the school buses. I mean, it was two school buses, and you're looking at roughly a couple hundred thousand dollars. So what are we doing with the old ones? Are we getting the trade-in value? Are we getting some money back? I mean, those are questions that just popped into my head. But I think the transparency is big. You know, we talk about, we've heard comments about masks, but we weren't notified that with the ESTER grants that we, that we took from the state and the federal funds, that we were, the conditions of that were to follow CDC guidelines. You know, we keep beating around masks. Masks aren't going away because we've accepted the funds. Did we need them? Did we need that $5 million? I can explain 1.6 of it. I talked about it the last time I spoke. I don't know where the other three and a half went. Did we need it? I've heard people talk about... Excuse me. I have a brain fart. We're just not transparent with what's going on, where the money's going. They talked about that remote learning wasn't an option, when really it was. You just got half of the amount. Kids in, learning in school, we got roughly 10,000 per kid if they're in school. If we did remote learning or offered remote learning, they were only worth 5,000. Our kids have become a financial commodity, and I don't understand why we need this money so bad. We are $70 million in debt because of all the new buildings that we've produced. I think they're beautiful. I think they're great. But why did we need the $5 million from the government? We can give that money back and we can scrap the whole mask issue. It's an option. It's all happening.
Thank you. Our final comment is from Mr. Marler. Is that Marler or Marser? Marler. If you'd please come forward to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
I wrote out name and address so I'd remember it this time. Bernard Marler, 3947 Eisenhower Road. I expressed my concerns at the last board meeting regarding masks. My concerns have not changed. I also expressed in an email, read at the August board meeting, that I found it unfortunate that the board was making decisions based on their own fear and not based on any actual data that would rationalize the fear for the children. Decisions and policies seem to be driven by emotion, and I would again ask that you remove that emotion, personal fear, from decisions you make affecting my children. Next, I would like to repeat my thoughts regarding the new testing criteria. I believe it is an enormous waste of time and resources to turn the school into a clinic. It is a disservice to our children that distracts them from their education. I would ask that you rescind the board's mandate for testing criteria and vote to make masks optional for all students. Medical decisions belong to families and their physicians, not to the school board. Third thing I have here is after discovering at the last meeting that a board member lives and works in another state, I followed up with several entities to confirm this. We're currently in the process of communicating with the requirements at Kansas statute under Chapter 25, Article 20, 25-2022A that states in part, "When a board member establishes residence outside the school district in which such a member resided at the time of election, a vacancy and the membership of the board shall exist." As of the day... as of the date upon which the determination is made by the county election officer of the home county of such a school district that a change of residence has occurred and such a member shall no longer be eligible to serve on the Board of Education of such a school district." That's as listed by the Kansas Office of Supervisor of Statutes. Furthermore, in the event the county election officer fails to make of the determination as required by that office, the community is left to pursue the recall process by submitting a petition and acquiring signatures and agreement of such petition. This is, I believe COVID testing is a waste of time and resources. I believe the process, uh, I believe the process to remove a board member is a unnecessary waste of time. Such a board member has a moral obligation to remove herself from the board given that she is currently operating outside the confines of the Kansas statute listed above. In the interest of the community, I ask that we not go through all of that and we allow the board to get back to representing the community as we have voted them in office to do so. The position should be vacated immediately and replaced with a member of the community. Uh, the last thing I would like to say, uh, and I, I'm sorry I didn't put it on my card, but I remembered it when other folks were talking about it. We talked about public comment in the last meeting. I say we. You guys talked about public comments and possibly changing that. And I can't say what your intent was there. I don't know what it is. But definitely the perception is it was to limit, um, the amount of interaction that we have. And I think that in a community, when you represent a community, you want more interaction from your community, not less. So when you guys do that, please consider that from our pers- I shouldn't speak for everybody, but from my perspective, it seems like the intent was to limit our communication and I think we need more of that. Um, and lastly, if you guys ever need anything from me, just give me a call.
Thank you. Okay, let me get on track here. So, uh, the first section, uh, on our reports and presentations tonight, we have Mrs. Bybee. Bybee, and she's going to present our fall assessment data. Welcome, Mrs. Bybee. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, when we start looking at our assessment data, we're of course looking at, um, what are the things that the, our assessments can tell us? So the, the first graph here is, uh, from our MAP assessment data. And this is the, uh, Carol, this is the one that you like, where it has the student, number of students versus the percentage. Number of students who scored in the low, low average, average, high average, or high categories. Uh, and then the next, uh, column is our norm grade level RIT. What that means is that's the norm, um, that was scored across the United States by kids at that grade level. And then the grade level mean RIT is the average that our students scored. And of course, our goal would be to score either at or above that norm grade level mean RIT. And then the last column is that as part of our strategic plan, our initial goal, um, is not our final goal, but our initial goal is that we get our students to 70% of our students scoring um, at the average to above-average, um, area categories. So the green highlights, uh, those percentages. So you can see that even, even in the course of the last year and a half, uh, really, our scores don't look, um, as doom and gloom as what you might be hearing out in the, um, out in the news. Because there's a lot out there right now with the decline of, uh, scores, of student scores and how they will be scoring and the effects that we may see from the pandemic, the effects of being out of school, um, that first, when we first had to shut down. So just wanted to share a little bit of, um, how we can use this data to be able to help us in moving forward. So, um, this, then this would be the reading. So that the one before was our math and then this is the reading. And you can see we do have some grade levels that are scoring, um, above our grade level mean RIT, which is a positive thing. One, the thing that we have noticed is that our second and third grader scores really, typically your second grade scores dip anyway in MAP because the difference in the test from first to second grade is that first can, first grade, the, the test is completely read to them. In second grade, students have to do their own reading. And so you typically see, it's just a change in how the test is given. So you typically see a dip anyway in second grade, but we definitely see a dip in our second and third grade scores. So those would be kids who were, uh, when the pandemic hit, who were at the end of their, their kindergarten year and the end of their first grade year. Not to make excuses, but we do have to consider what are some of those factors? Because we were lucky that our kids were in school octo- well, in a hybrid format, but then October 26th in school all day. Um, but what is, one thing that we do know is that there's so much foundational learning that happens in the kindergarten, first and second grade, not only with reading and math, but also with learning routines and learning what school is about and learning, um, social skills. There's so much that, um, of reading instruction or even math instruction that happens not just within their reading or math time, but throughout that whole day. So, um, again, what, what our teachers are doing now then is they look at where are our kids starting from? And how, what are the skills that they are missing? And not that we'll go back, like if for second and third grade, for instance, not that you go back and you fill all of those skills that they might be missing because we need to be teaching them second and third grade skills. So what we can do is, um, especially with our new math program, it really, they have done a really great job with something that are called adaptation packs. And they were designed for unfinished learning. So what a teacher can do is do a pre-assessment for a unit or a lesson in math and see what skills are those kids missing. Then during their intervention time, they can be working on those skills so that when they have that lesson happening real time in their classroom, those kids have that, um, skill that they have been working on with their teacher. And so, and our teachers that have started that during their math intervention time are seeing that to be a really positive thing for our kids, that they're understanding things much quicker than, um, if we weren't using that intervention time as, as, um, to address some of those prerequisite skills. So if we move on, uh, Dean, are you scrolling me down? Great, thank you. So this, this shows you, um, this is a cohort comparison. So these kids were, when it says second grade, that shows how they scored in first grade in the fall of '20, how they scored in the spring for MAP, and then how they scored this fall. So the light green is, means that they increased last year from fall to spring, if they were in that light, if it's highlighted in that light green. That bright green means that they increased from last spring to this fall. So we can see that there's not as many light green, or the bright greens as we obviously would like to see. And there were some significant drops of just what I was talking about. You see second grade. There's quite a drop from spring, um, to fall. And that partly is because it's a different test that they end up getting. So just to reiterate that. And then we, um, have those areas that are just one grade level that maintain. So while, um, our scores are still not obviously where they, we want them to be, our teachers, especially really second semester of last year and for sure now this year, they're able to get back to the business of learning. And there are still, that there were a lot of distractions last year. This year, they're really focusing on what are the essential skills that we need to make sure that our kids are learning? What are the, or have, what are the prerequisite skills that they may be missing? And how can we work smarter instead of harder to be able to really focus on those essential skills? Any questions about those pieces so far before we go into FastBridge?
I had one question. I'm trying to figure out the key here on the cohort comparison. I see the concern is red and I'm seeing it, the white means it went down?
Oh, it, I don't think it actually came off. I don't think it, it followed. So really our concerns, our second grade, where it was, where it dropped down from forty, seventy to 42%, 63 to 35%, that's a concern. It looks like it bolted it instead of the red.
So if it's just white, does that just mean it would, what, what is that?
The white, the white just means that's, that's not a, that's not a, um, it's there, we're continuing as we would normally go on. I don't have every one colored. So the concern would be, oh gosh, they fell a lot. So if you see that second grade that went from 70% in the spring to 42% in the fall, that's a real significant drop. So we're wanting to like, oh gosh, let's, now we know of course second, the test is different, but it, we definitely want to be watching tho- those group of kids to make sure that we're covering all of the skills that they need to have.
So like what would you say that the, the fall needs to be to make it red for concern? What was your criteria?
I, I use like, uh, anywhere from 15% above. So NWEA, um, actual MAP, which is who, um, develops MAP, they have actually done some research. There's not a whole lot of research out there because it's been such a short amount of time. But with, with the scores that they're getting across the United States, they are, um, expecting a six to 11 point drop in ELA, um, approximately. Not that it's going to happen with every student because we had some students that actually went up. Um, and then a six to 17 point drop in math. So that you can find honestly in various articles what, what NWEA is, is expecting or forewarning that we might see as a decrease in scores.
Thank you.
And then the other piece, um, and then moving into FastBridge. So let's talk FastBridge a little bit here. The difference between MAP and FastBridge. And I think this is important for our parents to understand too, is that MAP really is an overall, um, view of reading and math skills. FastBridge really pinpoints specific skills that it's testing. So you might have a student who actually tests very well in MAP and scores very well on MAP and yet their, their scores might be a little bit lower in FastBridge. What that's telling you is that there are specific skills on FastBridge that are, um, your phonemic awareness or your phonics, your vocabulary, how you pull words apart, uh, which is called morphology, your grammar, how you're able to decode words, um, in addition to comprehension. Where a student who is doing a MAP test, they have a lot of reading stra- oh, excuse me. They have a lot of reading strategies that they can utilize to help with them read to a certain level. And so then their scores might look actually really well on MAP. But maybe they're missing some of those skills that are, they struggle breaking a, a word apart with syllables or the, they, they're not understanding how to decode words as if they're younger with phonics. And so what FastBridge does is FastBridge can give us, as a universal screener, it can say, hey, these kids are at risk for struggling even further down the road in, um, reading if we don't take care of these skills. So that's what we look at with our FastBridge. And actually, our FastBridge scores looked a little bit better than our MAP scores did. So this has, FastBridge has been a lot of the skills that we have really focused heavily on the last year. This goes along with the science of reading, um, expectations from the state that we are required to do this universal screener, but that we are also providing some type of interventions that will address, um, those specific skills. And that goes along with a dyslexia initiative that's, um, that state required. So with, with FastBridge and then within our teaching, within the instruction, there, we're doing a lot of professional development and focus on how do we teach that phonics? How do we teach if students are missing, um, are low in vocabulary? Or are, um, low in FastBridge, now what does that tell us? What are some skills that we, we can be working with them on during intervention? So as you can see that, um, our kindergarten and our first grade, um, actually are looking pretty good. Our first grade scores, we were super excited about in math, in, um, both math and FastBridge. And what that tells us is that, and I had some great conversation with the, with the kindergarten and the first grade teachers. All of our kindergarten teachers last year were doing Eureka Math. And they were so excited about the strong number sense that it offered and that how the kids were talking about, um, numbers and breaking up numbers and being able to put numbers together whole and parts. And so that obviously shows in our first grade scores and that's pretty consistent across the board. So our, kudos to our teachers for being so committed to that implementation of those, of that Eureka Math. And we're excited to see what first grade then will, will bring. And so that was a really bright spot. Then with, um, our upper grade levels, so on the next one, Dean. So FastBridge Math is similar to MAP where it, it's the general reading skills. And I didn't call, I have a correction to make. That one, fourth grade that says 81% is actually 71%. My apologies. And that one should be green. So, um, with FastBridge, then for second on up, there are four levels. We, uh, because, uh, it breaks it up with students who are at high risk, students who are at some risk, low risk, and college pathway. So really what it does is it takes that K1, where all K1 had was high some and low risk. It takes that low risk and now it splits it even more. So we can see those kids that are doing a really high job with the skills that they are, um, being tested on with FastBridge. So what we would be looking at for our kids is those kids who are at high risk and those kids who, um, based on where they scored in that some risk category, some of those kids are going to be real close to that low risk and some are going to be lower to, closer to that high risk. And so we want to make sure we are, we know who those kids are. Which that's what the teachers do with their time, is they look specifically at their class, where are their kids falling and what are the things that we need to be working on with them? During core instruction and small group instruction and intervention. It's not just intervention. It helps to also drive their core instruction. Any questions about those? The, 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 the recommended skills on the side, um, they will, FastBridge actually will recommend to a teacher. When she pulls up her class list, um, it will say, where our recommendation for you as a whole group is that you need to focus on these skills. And then it gives recommended skills to focus on per child. Some kids are on track and so then they would continue status quo of what our nor- normal instruction is. Others, it, it will, um, say specifically which skills those kids should need added support in. And that's where teachers can focus either in small group or in intervention time. Any questions about those?
Will parents be receiving this from like all buildings at parent teacher conference?
They, yes, they should. There's a family letter that goes along with, um, the scores. So yes, they should be getting those at parent teacher conferences.
Okay.
Or within, even within the report card, but chances are at parent teacher conferences. Just because that allows the opportunity for the teacher to talk with the parent about it at conferences.
What was the part you said right before?
At report card time.
Report card time. Okay. Thank you.
So then you have the, um, AMATH and then you, or A-reading, AMATH and A-reading. And it's for all the levels, um, two through five and then six through 12. Keep on scrolling. You can see the numbers six through 12. You can see the recommended skills over on the side. So they get a little bit deeper with the skills that they are working on, specific to their grade levels. Okay, and then this is, um, just a district view. So where before I was looking at grade levels, this just gives you a district view again from FastBridge, looking at how many total our kids are college pathways, low risk, students some risk or high risk. So this gives us, now the auto math and the auto reading. Auto math is pretty much computation. This one, I, it was difficult at first because it's timed. And most of our tests are not timed where this one actually like gives the kids only so much time before it moves on to the next problem. And that was some getting used to with the administration of it and the kids being able to take that. Um, but, and then same with auto reading. That one is specific skills of the phonics and the, um, morphology or decoding words. So then our next, um, set of data is our socially emotional data. So SABERS is also part of FastBridge. SABERS is, uh, the checklist that our teachers do on each of their students and they are, it's recommended that they wait six weeks before they do that. So we did that. We did it the last week that our testing window was open. So our students know their student, our, their, our teachers know their students well enough to be able to hopefully get a good picture of where they feel like their students are at as far as their social skills go. Um, and what, and then the MYSABERS is where the students actually fill that out for themselves. And then actually the positive thing here was we have a really low number of high-risk students that look at themselves as high-risk and, and that our teachers are at high-risk, which is really a positive thing. The other thing that I think is positive from this, um, that I think is better than what we've done than what we've seen in the past, uh, last year, was how closely our teachers and our students' ratings are. When you see a big difference, and here's what our teach, our teachers will do is they will look at those individual student scores. And if they see one that is, and they'll compare it to their scores because if they see a student who has rated themselves, um, maybe in an at-risk category, that's a, that's a good opportunity then to speak with the child, speak with the parents, to be able to say, hey, you know, what's going on? Your, this child, your child is feeling as if they're not feeling confident about being at school or whatever the case may be. Your, this child, your child is feeling as if they're not feeling confident about being at school or whatever the case may be. Whatever the skill is that they've rated themselves on. So that's a good way for us to be able to monitor how students' social emotional growth is, is happening. Then also Boys Town Well Managed Schools, that's our program that we have in our elementary schools that all of our teachers are part of, have been trained. And we have facilitators that go into our schools that are, that are teachers. And we get us up and they go into, and they do what's called a Boys Town Sweep. And they will go into the classroom and be able to look for these specific skills as part of that implementation and take data on that. And then they also offer feedback to our teachers too. So if they're, if a teacher is struggling, let's say with praise, that person who's a trained facilitator can offer them some feedback and help on, and support them on how they can maybe do some different things with implementation within their classroom. So you can see the difference between when we started our sweeps in fall of 2019, where our areas of praise, praise to correction and physical environment have definitely increased. So we are super excited about what we're seeing with our Boys Town Well Managed Schools. Any questions about that?
I have a question. And it's more overall. I know last time we talked about this and thank you for providing the revised numbers. You're right. I like that. I'm kind of old fogey. So real numbers mean something. Have we provided the PD to the teachers to understand FastBridge? I know last time we talked, we were going to provide more professional development for teachers to understand FastBridge and some of the nuances that that might provide.
Yeah, actually the principals have been doing that within their PLC. So once the, once our testing was done, then that was one of the PLCs that they took time to be able to work with teachers on looking at their data. Our coaches are also, I sat down with our coaches and our elementary coaches and made sure that they understood how to be able to read those reports so that when they're in working with teachers, if they have questions, then they can also help teachers right then and there versus just a big professional development. Middle and high school, they both have Mrs. Puples and Mrs. Howard are both understand how to look at those reports. And I know that they have also done some work either mostly during PLC times versus a professional development day. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, so I guess in closing, overall, we understand that, that we were on a really good growth path. And then COVID hit. And we had, our teachers have done an incredible amount of work to try to make sure that their instruction stays strong, to make sure that our kids have what they need. And we are to be back on that track where instruction is our, at our, the focus of what it is that we are doing in our schools each and every day and looking to see how we can continue to just get, become more effective with our instruction. And hopefully our scores will continue to bounce back from, from where we were.
Any other questions?
I, I just have one question. I know we always talk about how much time we spend testing. It is my understanding that FastBridge is not all that time consuming. It's a, it's a quicker test.
Yeah. So our, the AMATH and the A reading is a very quick thirty to forty-five minute test. It is done, it can be done at obviously one sitting. K one takes longer, but it's all one-to-one. So our title staff, in addition to our sped staff, worked to be able to get those done one-on-one. And some of our classroom teachers are joining in on that at times too. But pretty much our title and sped staff helped to do that administration.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Bybee.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have Mrs. Whitaker, Mr. McCullough, and Roger Maxwell. Welcome to you all to present information on, on a program for Ottawa High School Bank. Excuse me.
Good evening. So first I just want to start off by just reminding everybody about our CTE pathways that we have at the high school. And so we currently do have twenty-one different pathways that students can engage in throughout their time here. Students can dabble in those in the introductory level. They can work on completing those pathways. They could also be just like concentrators, which means that they take an introductory and a technical level course, but they do not take that application level. And so one thing that's important to remind everybody about is each pathway has introductory level courses, technical level courses, and application. When we get to the application level, what the state is encouraging us to do and what they've really given us latitude to do is to name that application, what we want it to be through workplace experiences. We love to get our kid, our students out in the community, engage in our businesses. But we also recognize with COVID and even without COVID, it's important for us to have in-house options for kids as well. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McCullough because he is going to talk a little bit about, was that okay? Oh, okay. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McCullough because he is our pathway teacher for our finance, our accounting and our business marketing pathways. And he's going to talk a little bit about the Ottawa High School Bank that we are hoping to start in January if things go well in conjunction with the Kansas State Bank. So I'm going to turn it over to him and kind of talk you through the process of the collaboration that we've done with Kansas State Bank, with the school and the bank in Topeka that we've been modeling this partnership after and let you know kind of where the kids are and what they've been doing. Did I steal some of your speech, sir?
Nope, not at all. We're good. We're good. Good evening. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the student-run bank. First of all, I need to back up because this is about a two-year process. We started this a couple of years ago. This was, I think, a, you know, something that, that two administrators and Roger had thought up that would be a, a really good thing for our students. And when they let me know, being the finance teacher, I was a hundred percent on board with this because I think it's going to be an incredible opportunity for our kids. But two years ago, we had COVID. Two years ago, Terry Wallace and I, our marketing teacher, had an opportunity to go to Washburn Rule and visit their student-run bank. And there's a lot of schools that have banks within their school districts that's ran by students. In my opinion, Washburn Rules is the Cadillac of school banks. It was an amazing program that they have there. And that's what we hope to model our program after that. So I've got their secrets and their procedures and forms. So we're going to make ours the Cadillac of, of high school-run banks. But let me get going here. So the bank is going to do some incredible things for all of our students, not just students within the finance pathway. Yes, it's going to be hands-on. Yes, we're going to take kids that are in the finance pathway and put them in and run the bank. Everything from seniors hopefully down to sophomores because we have to have a rotation of kids from semester to semester and year to year. We have to train those kids. Right now, we have a young, I have a young lady in my banking and finance class who actually works at Kansas State Bank, who's going to move right in and really help us get this program off and started because she has the experience of being in a bank. But this program is going to give our kids not only hands-on, but it's going to give them so many skills. And not just skills in finance, but the soft skills that when I sit with my CTE advisory board members, the one thing that they tell me they want people to have when they come to work for them are those soft skills. And that happens to be an emphasis with CTE this year is to really teach kids soft skills. Well, this is going to teach them time management, leadership, being to work on time. I mean, just all those soft skills, they're going to be able to get right here in school. But it's not just them that's going to benefit. It's going to benefit every student in Ottawa High School because they're going to have the opportunity to use this bank. They're going to have the opportunity to open accounts, deposit money in accounts, withdraw money in accounts, face-to-face banking interaction because the bank will be only savings accounts and it will only be face-to-face interaction. There won't be any online banking. There won't be any ATMs. So it's going to give every kid that has an account the ability to understand personal finance, which is something every kid needs. Okay? A little more about the bank. Like I said, savings accounts only, but we're going to set the bank up where we have people in positions. We're going to have elected positions, a president and a vice president of the bank. And then we're going to have other positions like a teller, cashiers, bookkeepers, auditors, and even marketing. And I hope, it's my intentions to use Mr. Wallace's marketing class to do the marketing for the bank. So now we're incorporating two pathways in this venture. Okay? Like Mrs. Whitaker had mentioned, the bank is going to be sponsored by Kansas State Bank. They are going to help us get everything off the ground and running and kind of be our Federal Reserve of our bank supervising us. But the bank is going to be the property of Ottawa High School. So one thing we found out when we were meeting with Silver Lake Bank, who's actually looking over everything that we're doing because they have three high school banks that they have sponsored. They have graciously given us their software to use for all transactions and deposits and even calculating interest on accounts. They're going to allow us to use their software, which is absolutely huge. They're going to customize the software exactly the way that, that Kansas State Bank wants us to have. But the bank itself is going to be owned by the district. So that means all the accounts and all the assets are all going to be the property of USD two ninety. We're going to be like a customer for Kansas State Bank. And that's kind of the way that they set these up and, and, and work them. So. Anything else?
That covers everything. The one thing that we are working to get our hands on is that we need to create a memorandum of understanding between Kansas State Bank and USD two ninety school district. And so we have been working with Silver Lake Bank to get our hands on a copy of what they utilize. Because I always appreciate Roger. He always tells us we don't need to reinvent the wheel. So we want to get our hands on theirs and so we can kind of model our memorandum of understanding off of that, make sure it obviously works for us and it works for the bank. And so we will be bringing that to you, all the board here, as soon as we can get our hands on that and make a copy of it. The other thing is this just furthers our partnerships with our community. And this is when we look at the Kansas school redesign, when they challenge us with our business partners, that is a strength of USD two ninety, especially at the high school. But we ask ourselves a question, not only are what's the community doing for us, but what are we doing for the community? And by making this partnership and helping our students learn how the banking system works, not just our kids in those pathways, ultimately, we're helping out our community. We're potentially giving Roger some students that will be lifelong, potentially partners with his business and having those accounts and maybe opening up checking accounts and doing those things. And so we're really excited to have this opportunity in-house for our students and very grateful for the partnership that Roger has, had come to us about and was willing to figure out how to make this work. So is there anything else that we missed? Roger, do you want to say anything?
Thanks for letting me come in and talk to you guys tonight. One real quick thing is that Silver Lake has been doing this for fifteen years, so they're not a rookie by any means. And not only is this program designed for the students to be utilized, but the clubs and organizations can use it as well. So if the O Club or anybody else is needing cash and getting ready for, to man a, 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 things for like concession stands or anything like that, they'll be able to utilize it as well. But it is an opportunity. It's our backbone of our organization is that we want to make sure that people understand what financial literacy is all about. That's a term that they utilize. I think it's a very appropriate one to talk about because we need to get, make sure all young people need to understand how to balance a checkbook, different things like that. Because they're going to be citizens of our community or other communities for life. And this is a great way to get them started. And we think it's an opportunity for both of us. And we want to get started. And part of that process is you guys naming your bank, whatever you guys want to name it, Ottawa High School Cyclone Bank. And then we'll get the materials ready to go on that. So we already have equipment lists, so we know what we're going to need. So they've been able to give it, a gentleman by the name of Shane has been in the program for thirteen years at Silver Lake Bank. And he's been very gracious of providing his time and his talents for us. So we're excited. Try to find a good spot in the high school as well and then we'll move forward with it. But thank you.
Do you guys have any questions for us? Anything?
I, I have a couple of questions. What about the liability that, that it puts on the school? I would like someone to give some information on that.
Did you speak to that in that meeting that you were in, Roger, the liability that it puts on us? Did they speak to that when you guys had this?
There is a limited liability issue in there, but it also falls back on us because we also have an account relationship. So it really falls into the account relationship. They've never had any issues with it. One thing that we want to make sure is very, very clear in this deal is that the partnership is a sponsorship from the Kansas State Bank. We can't do anything to call it a branch of the Kansas State Bank. It's your guys' bank because if we call it a branch, I'd be violating branch banking laws and I can't do that. So from a liability standpoint, there's not a lot because it's all on a savings account basis. So there's no overgrabs, no checks type deals, but they'll have access to their own funds. But Shane has never said there's been a liability issue. The state treasurer is supporting this program and has over the various departments. I think there's one out in western Kansas as well. And I know that they've done a couple more in north central Kansas. The only thing that we have to agree to is that if some other community wants to come to getting another bank account or a bank relationship with a high school, we have to refer them to Silver Lake. We can't do anything. Silver Lake wants to drive the ship since it's their program that they started.
Does that answer that question, Olivia?
It, yes, somewhat.
Okay.
What would the amounts of money then that we would be having on the property, what would that be?
So the actual money, did you, can you talk a little bit about that, like at Washburn Rule, the actual money that the kids were dealing with?
So I think the teller drawers at Washburn Rule had about twenty-two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars in them. It kind of depends on, they do things so different over there because they, their, their bank's in charge of all their accounts. So there'd be times where they might have large sums of money. We would not have that because we just have our student accounts. We would just have really whatever money that we determine that we're going to set in our teller drawers is the amount of money that we're probably going to have on, you know, on hand. So it's, it's just, those are decisions that we'll make between Kansas State Bank and us. But I, I think in general, they had about two thousand dollars in their teller drawers.
And this will be the third time that I've experienced having a student-run bank within a high school. And it's a really secure process as far as getting that money from the safe in the bookkeeper's office to the location. Right now, our plan is to kind of work out of the concession stand that we utilize in the evening. We're going to have mobile tellers stations where those will be pushed into that space during cyclone hour, before and after school potentially. Kids can access their accounts and then all of that technology will be then pushed back down. The kids will take it back down to Mr. McCullough's room to be locked up for the evening. And then that money will be taken right down to the bookkeeper and locked up and put where it needs to be. And I, and I appreciate that question. I, we've not had issues at the other school two times I've experienced a partnership like this. The kids do a really nice job and we keep that money safe and secure between like transport from point A to point B. I've even been in a place where it was a mobile bank and so it wasn't even in a closed space. It was like a podium. That's where the kids did all their banking out of. And so we thought it was important to at least make sure that we were in some type of a brick and mortar location when finding the house for our bank.
Okay. And I think this sounds very exciting. I previously did work in the banking industry. So I know the stress that comes if your till is off and like, and that's not even as a teenager. So there is a lot of stress there that I, I do have questions about in, with the size of drawer and, and all those details and things. So I just would want to focus on making sure, but obviously if those other schools already have it organized out and you're just modeling off that, I'm sure all that has already been thought through.
And that's part of what, when Mr. McCullough and Mr. Wallace, they went to Washburn Rule High School, it would have now been almost a year and a half ago, to see their bank in action just so we could kind of process those questions ourselves. They were able to see all of that firsthand, watch the kids count their tills, balance it out and learn how to do all of those functions at the bank. And that's when Roger needed some part-time employees. And he had come to us and we were able to find a young lady that's within that pathway that had some time after school that was able to do that. And so even having one of our students working for him, that's something we would hope that we can continue if they need the help. And we have a student who's available to keep us just on our toes about that stuff and making sure that we're being really careful with our kids.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Harold, Susan, Linda?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Did you, I, I just had one. I'm so sorry. Did you say when the estimated time of start was going to be for this?
Our estimated time is January is what we're hoping. I don't want to say like January fifth, just in case we run into some snafus. But I would hope towards the beginning of second semester is our goal to kind of get everything up and running.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And Mr. Maxwell, you have, Kansas State Bank has always been a great support. And Mr. Maxwell, you have, Kansas State Bank has always been a great supporter of our school, and we appreciate you reaching out to make this community connection for us and for you all for making another addition to our CTE program. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Cobb, is Mr. Franks here yet, or do we need to? Okay, perfect, okay, good, then we can move on to the archery program. This item is just for discussion tonight, but Mr. Franks is going to present a plan for instituting an archery program that would use the OHS logo and name. Welcome, Mr. Franks.
Hello. Thanks for seeing me first off, I appreciate your time.
Can you just put that microphone a little bit closer to you? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
So my name's Jared Franks, I live at 1315 Penixville. I've been an archer my entire life, and about four years ago, I was at a national tournament, and I had saw through poor shooting of my own, I got to shoot with the youth downstairs in one of the world's biggest archery tournaments. And I got to meet these young individuals, and they were shooting for scholarship money. And I was so impressed with the opportunities children were given, you know, excuse me, to shoot for, for scholastics and whatnot, that I decided I want to try to do that here in Ottawa. You know how it goes, life goes on four years later, finally starting it. But, so, all these programs are set up for youth archery, and they grow in their own disciplines. S3DA is the only program that will shoot all four disciplines, which is indoor, field, 3D, and hunting. That's what I want to pursue after, I've become an S3DA coach. Oh, you got it up there, awesome, okay. So all these here are region, are north region, south region, east region, they all have multiple teams that are represented in the states. Throughout all this, to cut the short story, I guess the scholarships basically are majority of the east and southeast colleges. I would like to try to help move them more to the central United States, like maybe get Ottawa University, K-State has a couple of clubs. You know, maybe make it more, more of a centralizing for us. So their mission is to foster and educate and guide the youth in areas of 3D indoor, target, outdoor, and archery and bow hunting ethics. So the, what basically this is going over is, it's grown tremendously since 2015. They got somewhere upwards to 6,000 members now, as of currently. It's sponsored and teamed with like USA and ASA, those are all basically the major contributors of all precision shooting for archery. They're the ones that train and manage like Team USA for the Olympics and whatnot. So this is an opportunity for students to not only grow in the archery sport, but to grow themselves into a career if they choose to, because it's the only step they can make through archery in the Olympics, if that's, you know, something they choose to do. Between that and the opportunities for the scholastics and different regional and state tournaments to help build like personal confidence and the skill level, it's just an opportunity to help people that, kids that don't always fit the mold, and maybe we're not all football stars, maybe we're not all baseball stars, but anybody can shoot archery. Anybody can challenge themselves to be a better shooter from any precision sport, from trap shooting to archery to long range. It's, I feel like this would be a great opportunity to, to bring in and help maybe some of our youth that are looking for maybe a little bit of guidance that they're not getting now. As far as safety goes, this is kind of a funny number, you are 0.45 times, archery is 0.45 times more safer than pretty much all the sports in school. The only thing that's safer is badminton and table tennis. I found that one funny because I don't know, we don't even have table tennis today. So there's a lot behind, I know we all don't know archery, but three-dimensional is basically, if you can imagine walking through the woods and these students are presented with 40 targets, and these targets are a three-dimensional version of an animal made of foam. There's a scoring system on each one of them that dictates points per shot, and they have to, depending on their age and their classification they're in, they have to shoot different distances. So every shot is a challenge, and every person, every person at class has to meet that same challenge. So it's, it's a very individual sport, which is extremely challenging, you know, we don't have the, we don't have the, I lost the game because somebody else didn't hold up their part of the team. It's if you walk out and you win, it's because you won. If you lost, it's because you lost, and the only way you're going to do better is if you practice harder. So basically, when I'm coming here today, there's quite a bit of information, I feel like I brought too much information. What I'm asking for is permission to use the Ottawa High School likeness, and I'd also like to provide that's granted, have this a, a lettered sport.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Franks?
It, it sounds like it'll be very much like our trap shooting club, very much like that.
So we will not be taking action on this tonight, but we will bring it up on the agenda for our next meeting. So thank you very much for all the information that you provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we are at 6.01, which is the public comment policy. This item is up for action and discussion.
Okay, this is the policy that was tabled last time, so there are a couple of things that have changed just a tad from last time. In your, in your packet, you'll see a portion that has been struck. That item has been struck not because it's been taken out of the policy, but because that actual piece of it is dealing with complaints, and they're identified within policy KN in the complaint procedure. So it's really redundancy in the policy, and so in order to make it more clear, that piece is taken out, the complaint piece is in policy KN, and this policy then just becomes about public comment and how public comment is governed for the five minutes that exist within public comment during, during board meetings. I think, and I didn't put this in your list, but if you, if you look at the actual sheet that is provided there, there's actually two, two parts, again, that has some redundancy. The, the second sentence that says that each board meeting, the president shall, the rest of it, it states the same thing again under the request. So even though it's not struck through, I would ask that whatever we determine here, we allow for that to be struck so that you don't have two sentences that basically state the same thing. So the, the biggest piece for you is to determine where we want to go in the actual meat of the policy. I think we, we felt confident that the, that the rules were the appropriate rules for the policy. The questions were on number two and number five. So number two was the ability to continue to fill out the form prior to the meeting and not be vetted per the rules. So that is, that is one piece that we, that we need to address and determine whether we want it to state it the way that it is currently in the rules or whether that's the change that the board intends to make. And then on number five, the questions were about the number of minutes, currently sits at five, as well as where written statements will go. Written statements were not previously a part of the comment policy. Written statements were always been reserved for the board. We did not start reading written comments until we didn't have a public forum for comments to be had. So again, these are, these are conversations that, that you need to have as a board and determine where we want to be with this policy. The one change that I did make from last time, we had identified that written policies would be, would be listed within the minutes. We've changed that, we can actually identify that the, I said written policies, written comments would not be provided for in the minutes, but would actually be listed under the public comment section, just like all of the other addendums to, to the agenda. So if somebody had a written comment, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't find it in the minutes, you would actually find it under public comments within the, within the agenda. Click on public comments, they would all be listed there, you could click on them and read them. So at that, we'll leave it up for discussion as to where the board wants to go, or if they just want to adopt the policy as written, depending on your ideas.
Someone want to start?
Well, I, I do believe that the, the 12 o'clock PM deadline is probably a good one to have in there. It gives, it gives our, our board clerk time to vet the person that's speaking, make sure that they do live within the district and have, and are a patron of the district and have children in the district. So I think that's probably a good one to have in there. I do know that the city, I believe, puts, does not read letters publicly. They have them in minutes, I believe, in their minutes. So I, I, it would be, it would be, I, I see it as beneficial to follow what the city policy is as well.
Anyone else? I missed the discussion last week because I was at a tennis tournament in Chanukah, watching my daughter play, so I, I didn't hear everyone's comments. Harold?
I think number five is fine. I think the way that it can be in the public comment section is probably better because I think that people would be looking there. So I'm okay with that change. I think it's okay to, number two, that, I know, Linda, you said noon. I would like to see it left at the way it is now that you can sign up before the meetings. And I do think there's value in that, that's why we've been also working for the most recent past. So I guess I would support number five, but I'd support changing to just before the meeting.
Well, just as something to think about, Harold, should someone come to the meeting and sign up to speak right before the meeting, and they are, and according to their card, they are not within our district, and I don't think any of us have our district boundaries, addresses memorized, but they're not within our district and do not have children, and that has happened recently. It would be, it would be awkward to then try to, as a president, vet that person as they come before us to speak. So that, that could lead to awkward situations.
It could be an awkward situation, but I think that we have the resources at hand that we could at least try to address it. And if it becomes an issue going forward, I don't have a problem with readdressing it. But I don't know that in the recent past, we've had a lot of issue with that. So I guess what I'm in favor of is try to manage it the best we can, the way we've been doing it, and if it happens to get out of hand and we can't manage it, I know there's some technology we could apply, but I think that, I'd like to see to try to maintain it. If it gets out of hand, we can readdress it.
Well, what, 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 what would you do if, if like, I'm, I'm asking hypothetical, if you were president and there was a card and it, that person was out of district and they were standing at the podium, then what would, what recourse does the president have?
Well, I think it's obvious that if somebody was outside the district, if we, if the president knew it at that point in time, they happened to put down Wellsville instead of Ottawa, there's a lot of my friends in Wellsville, I don't speak bad of them, I'm using them as an example, then the president would have the ability to say, you know, our policy is to let people who are residents of USD 29, the school district, speak. And I think it's fine that we address it at that point in time. Again, I think that we're talking about a policy that we haven't had a lot of issue with, and if we have a lot of issue with it going forward, we can readdress it. But at this point in time, I don't think we've had a kind of issue with it one way or the other.
Harold, I, I want to say I, I agree that I, I like the flexibility of somebody being able to come in right before our meeting. I think, so our board clerk is the one that usually will go ahead and vet those people that come in. And I think, you know, if we can encourage people to call, because it is nice to know ahead of time how many people we are going to have to speak if we need to change any of those, you know, times from five minutes to four minutes to three minutes to fit everybody in. I guess if we allow people to come in right before seven o'clock and we have too many people that she can't get them processed, right? So maybe, I don't know, please don't have 10 people show up right at a quarter or seven with papers, but, I mean, if, if that happens, if there's too many, then I guess at that point, if we can't get it vetted before the beginning of the meeting or before their turn to speak, I guess, you see what I'm saying? Can we have some flexibility with that and, and allow them to come in, but just know that there's no guarantee that they're going to get a spot if we can't manage it?
I, I just wanted to add, I know, I'm sorry to interrupt, Harold. I know on the, our website, we have that handy little thing where you can type an address right in, and it shows where, Dean has made it so nice and user-friendly, it just puts the little point of where their address is, and then the boundaries of all the schools are highlighted, and you can easily, like momentarily, instantly, whatever, tell if they're in the district or not. So I, I don't really think it's a time, a time thing, because Dean has hooked us up, like he always does, takes such good care. And I, I agree with Harold that I never think, I don't think it's ever good to make people feel like they can't come, or, you know, if they were unavailable to, to be here by noon, we don't want to make it seem like we're trying to silence anyone.
No, not at all, no. And, and I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it going to seven, as long as we just keep in mind that we do need to make sure that process is done before we allow people to speak. So if it is that easy to do, then that doesn't really cause a problem. I do agree with, oh, go ahead, yes, Susan.
Sorry. Harold, when you were talking about electronic methods, is that what you were referencing, what Malia was saying? Where you can type in the address and find the boundaries?
Well, there's, yeah, I would think, we would know that, we could do that, or we could, you know, other methods, I don't know, you know, I still think the horse and buggy is fine, so I don't know what modern technology we had. I would think that we could, if there was a question, we could figure out whether or not participate, a person who was wanting to participate in our meeting was a member of the USD 290 school district boundaries. And so I, I think there, you know, we would probably know from a lot of the cards immediately. So maybe there'd only be one or two that we would got to vet out, you know, if we had, you know, but obviously, if they put down, you know, 432 South Main, Ottawa, Kansas, we'd know that they're a resident of our school district. There'd just be a few that we would be questioning, I would think. So again, I'm just assuming that there'd only be a couple of cards at any one meeting that we might have a question, they don't want to take long to check.
Okay. I, I can agree with that. The part that, that really is something that's important to me is that we not read the written statements publicly. It, when, when items are written, it's written with a different voice than when it's presented verbally, and it's really hard as a reader to be able to correctly interpret that or portray that, and, and we had not done that before. I think it's better for people to be able to go in and read it so they can read it in the tone that it was intended. So I, I would like to see that part taken off and, and put into the public comments instead of it publicly.
I know we can't listen to the thing, but that actually was something that I did want to point out, I was, I don't want to interrupt the computer, it's hard to know when they're going to speak or whatever, but I did want to point out that we do not have to have kids to speak. You do have to be a resident of our district, but by any means, there is no requirement to have children, have a child in our district to come and speak. And I, I just wanted to make sure that, that everyone knew that.
Yeah, you're correct, that's in our statement that we read each time, that it's the, the parents and taxpayers of USD 290.
Yeah, I think Linda may have accidentally misspoke, and I just wanted to.
How, in what way?
You said that you have to be a resident and have a kid to speak. Anyhow, it's not important, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. I know you weren't here last time for the discussion, and Chris was supportive of these things, the coming before the thing and the five minutes and the having it, having it read also. We discussed how it, people, it makes them feel, would probably feel more valued, like their words were actually being read instead of just sent in, and you don't know if the members are actually taking the time to read those, or if it's just being like shelved, you know, we have the opportunity to read it, but we aren't, they aren't guaranteed that it is read. And that was why we were supportive of still having it read, but also having it in last but also having it in, uh, last week we said the minutes, but Ryan has updated that. So I know it is frustrating to read all of those, uh, for whom we do have, we haven't had any lately.
Well, it's not so much frustrating. It's just that I really do think that, like, and something that's written has a different voice and you just can't interpret that whenever you read it aloud. Um, and it's not something that we had done before. So I, I, I just hate to take into our public comment time for people that want to show up to, to read letters.
And it's, it would be like, sometimes you get an email and you read the email a certain way, a, a different way than it was intended when it was written. That, that it's, it's the same thing.
Right. And we may still read the, these public comments incorrectly when they send them in. But at least everyone feels valued that their comments were heard publicly in the public comment section. And that is an excellent point, Julie, that you made though of taking up the time. So maybe we could make an adjustment that if we have the full 30 minutes of people who come in to speak in person, if that 30 minutes is filled, then we will not read the public comment. I think that would be a great, that's a great point that I had not thought of. So I would be willing to make that.
How about if we have it too, that we, if we're having a, the ability to have a public forum where people can be there, um, there would be less of a function to read those written comments. And if we are back to the way we used to be where we couldn't have people in the audience, then we can have those comments again, make it based on that.
I'm still supportive of having them read.
I think, Melody, you'd make a nice, uh, thought that you said that you would combine the public comment first and then the reading would be second. And as long as it fit under the 30 minutes, uh, that we would go ahead and read them. I think that's a nice, um, deal. So I'll make a motion that we leave number five, uh, the way it's written. And then number two is changed to, from noon to before the meeting. And we make one more addition and that is Melody's suggestion about that the public comments would be read, uh, provided there's still time under the 30 minutes.
I'll second that.
Harold, I'm not sure that I understood you on number two. Because I thought your comment was different than what you had suggested.
Right.
What you said was that you wanted to leave it, that they had to have their cards in by 12 o'clock? Is that what you meant to say?
I said I would change it to be from 12 o'clock to, uh, right before the meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's not what I got from your statement. So I wanted to make sure that, that we were on the same page.
I think just to follow up there, that's currently the way that number two is written. If number two just stays the same, it identifies noon and then sort, or it says, "Or individuals are requested to complete a form provided by the clerk and return that before the, prior to the start of the meeting." So number two, as written, would meet Harold's expectations and I'd second it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure before, before we took a vote here. Is there any discussion before we take a vote? All right.
And then restate again the part about written comments, please.
So as, as I understand the written comments in, in my notes, um, what, what would be indicated is that, um, that written statements would be secondary to public comment, to public in-person statements. If there were time to read the written statements less than the 30 minutes, that we would go through the written statements. If the in-person comments exceed the 30 minutes, then the written comments would simply be added for at-home reading for their enjoyment. So it's all based upon a, a timeframe, I guess, at that point. And I'll do wordsmithing to make sure that it's right and appropriate within the policy. But that's the way that I understand it.
All right, perfect. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Susan, are you a yes?
Yes. Dean says yes.
She said, oh, she's, sorry, I forgot to look at you. All right, so that passes 5-0. Moving on down. All right, we are at our bus purchase. Dr. Cobb's?
Okay, so, um, if Dean had clicked on here, ultimately scroll down there, Dean. Looking at purchasing two buses, uh, keep going all the way to the end. Uh, the request is to purchase for Midwest Transit, who is who we have purchased our buses from, I think, for the last five years. Maybe most of our buses are built by Midwest Transit. They all come the same, which creates some consistency for our mechanic to be able to go through it. Uh, the reason that we have two is we have, um, currently we have the, the funds in our budget to address this, uh, from a transportation standpoint. But also because, uh, purchasing two new buses puts seat belts and air conditionings on, on every route bus that we have, uh, which I think is important. Uh, the seat belt's certainly a safety issue for our kids. Air conditioner, just a nice convenience for all of our kids. If you've ever ridden a bus on a hot day, it's, uh, not necessarily an enjoyable experience. Uh, one of the questions that was asked earlier about what is the process for the other buses? And ultimately what happens is we begin a rotation of the buses out. So the, the two buses that would come out would be compared to our, um, our set aside buses. Just in case we have an issue with a bus, we, we have more buses than we have routes for a couple of reasons. One, when we have activities, we need to be able to take them for extra activities and have access to them. Two, if there's a mechanical issue with a bus, we still need to have access to other buses to ensure that we can, we can continue our routes. So these two buses would go through that rotation and we would begin to take a look at which is our best, which are our best non-everyday buses to keep in that trans, uh, in that, um, transition so that we go, the other buses will be rotated out. They'd either be sold on Purple Wave or auctioned off or traded in, whatever's going to create the greatest value for us. We'll bring those back to the board once we know what that is for the surplus value for you all to approve how we choose to, to get rid of those. We're expediting this process somewhat because the cost of metal is intended to go up in November. These are the statewide bids. They're going to change November 1. So by purchasing them now, we get them at a cheaper rate than we would if we waited until November. So ultimately, that's the, the, the issue with the buses. Is my voice cracked there? That was really nice. Um, maybe I should have a drink of water. I don't know. Any questions about buses?
Well, now I'm having problems here. Um, I would just say that, um, I know last year we had, we have so many activities, which I think is great, um, and some of them are getting so large in the number of students that are participating. I know middle school track last year, uh, I forget where it was or something. They had to actually take part of their, their students in one load early and they had to sit there and wait and then come back so they could get another load because we didn't have enough buses. So I think that is great and I'm all about safety. I'm always for safety. So I'm supportive.
It's going to be well needed and well deserved by our transportation staff. Not only is it a, an issue for our kids with air conditioning on our buses, but to be a bus driver and sit in those buses all day long, uh, it's a, a huge benefit to a, a department that does so many great things for our kids. We certainly appreciate our transportation department. And if, by the way, I think October 20th is National Transportation Employee Appreciation Day. I want to reach out to our bus drivers and thank them for all that they do.
Absolutely. They're very important. So yes.
Absolutely.
Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the, I hit the wrong button. Sorry. Yes.
President, we purchased the two buses from Midwest Transit for $212,880. Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that passes 5-0. We are down to the 3% clarification. Dr. Cobb's?
All right. So, uh, several weeks ago when we came in, the, the motion was that, um, we would have a mask optional process. And one of the things that we identified was a, a threshold of 3%. Um, but there was not a lot of discussion or clarification on what 3% was. So I drafted a, a guideline to at least present to the board to begin discussion and see where we wanted to go with it. This is what you, what you currently have in front of you. Um, the original idea was that we would take a two-week positivity rate. The two-week was decided based upon the length of the quarantine, which is typically seven to 14 days depending on where you're at within the process. Um, for most, it's seven to 10 days. Some get to 10 to 14 days, uh, again, depending on where they're at in the process. So we would evaluate those numbers every Friday and look at a two-week period from Thursday to two weeks previous Thursday. And the reason that we would look at it that way is so that we can make sure that all of our nursing staff were able to update their INQ lists and we know exactly how many positive students we have in our buildings at the time. On Friday, we would evaluate, uh, that list. If we were under the 3% threshold, great, we continue to go as we go. If we exceed that 3% threshold and we have a weekend to be, to begin to, um, be able to inform parents that there'll be a change come Monday, so that we're not doing it in the middle of the week. And nobody wants to call on Tuesday night that says, oh, by the way, on Wednesday, masks have to be worn at school. We're going to have half of our parents that never got the memo or didn't read the, the email or whatever it happened to be, it'll be mass chaos. But at least at this point, uh, we have three or four days to begin to, um, inform parents of what would happen should we ever exceed the 3% threshold. There was also a piece where we were looking at what happens if we see what would be identified, um, by either the county or a state as an outbreak. And if you ever look at the state outbreak site, it's, uh, it's less than conclusive as to what constitutes an outbreak. Some are listed on that site with only two positive cases. Some are listed on that site with like 27 positive cases in the school. So we're not really sure what constitutes an outbreak. But what we identified in this, at least as a baseline to, to begin the conversation, was that if we double our threshold within a short period of time, if we go from 3% to 6%, then that's the point that from an administrative standpoint, we step in and say, okay, we need to start masking tomorrow because we have an outbreak on our hands. And, and subsequently put some things to, to possibly halt a school shutdown, which then begins at 10% per the county. So 10% positivity rates, if you remember, the guidelines that the county developed last year and, and reasserted this year, was that in a building, if we exceed 10%, then they would look, uh, to at least consider a shutdown. We wouldn't want to intervene long before we, we tell our kids that they're not allowed to, to come to school. So that's the idea behind 3%, 6% and the two-week threshold that it created. Um, certainly, uh, there's a lot of, uh, opportunity for conversation here to determine if this is even beginning to, to come close to the vision that the board had at the time when, when this motion was made, if we need to scrap this and do something else, or if we can build off of what's currently here. So I'll leave it in your hands at that point to, at this point, to ask any questions or have conversations amongst yourselves and see where we go.
Anyone have any questions or comments to start?
I can tell you first, if you're, if you're wanting current numbers. Our numbers are so low, um, that I will not identify individual schools because certainly it's going to make, it's going to make it very easy to identify students. But if you look at a one-week threshold, it's four students district-wide that have been positive in the last week, in the last two weeks, it's six. So we have a very low positivity rate. This is a, a, a great thing for our district moving forward. Um, and if that has any indication as to where you want to go with this particular policy, I think that's important. The other piece of this, if you're interested in the testing aspect, um, as of Friday, these numbers are good through Friday. We've, we've administered 106 of the antigen test, uh, in, in phases one and two. Uh, the 23 students, uh, in two, seven of those have already completed their seven days of testing. Seven, uh, I remember there was over a weekend, so those days, uh, counted as, as tested days. 16 of them are still in the protocol. And again, you, you, you all are aware of a recent exposure situation. Uh, the vast majority of those kids chose to test. 13 of them are in the testing protocol right now, which is part of where you see that, those numbers. Four of them chose to simply test with the county health department on day five. Uh, and then one chose to not test at all and stay home for entire 10 days of, of quarantine. Um, so that's what we've seen from a testing standpoint with the, with the policy that's currently in place.
I wonder, um, about the two weeks. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Harold.
I'm sorry. Uh, I just had one question or comment and, um, and Dr. Cobb said, I, I was thinking today, and then you just popped it up today, or tonight, that we test for seven days, um, but we're looking at two-week, uh, numbers. And you just helped, you just helped me identify that we do four, one week, and two more if we look at a six-week. I mean, a two-week. I'm sorry. I don't want to misquote anybody. I guess my thought is, is that what would you think about if we just went to the previous seven days instead of the two-week, uh, deal? Because that's what we test, based upon what we test. Uh, what's your thoughts on that?
Melody and I had this conversation earlier today as well. Um, I don't know that there's a huge difference between calculating the numbers for a week or calculating the numbers for two weeks. Um, the, the reality of it is, is that currently our numbers are, are low enough that it doesn't really impact us one way or the other. Uh, I think as with, uh, with any of the policies that we have, uh, within this board, um, we have, um, tried to be very proactive, uh, in our approach as we, as we've gone through these things. I don't know that, that doing it for a week, um, is, is, is an, is an issue. Um, I don't know that doing it for two weeks is any greater than doing it for one week. I think what, what, what is important is that we're monitoring the number of positive cases, uh, that we're, that we're recognizing and trying to, to keep in mind if we're seeing those cases increase, uh, so that we can, we can make decisions about where we need to go. Currently, we're not seeing those cases increase. We're continuing to see them diminish, as a matter of fact, uh, which again, is all, is all positive for our district. So I would, I would really have no problems, uh, with this policy indicating that's a seven-day window to identify what those, what those positives are. Um, I think again, we would look at it from a Thursday to Thursday standpoint to give us a Friday to be able to communicate with parents should any changes need to be made. Uh, and hopefully we don't, we don't need to make any changes. Um, we continue to see, um, a decline in, in COVID cases moving forward. I think another, um, really, um, interesting piece of this conversation that's coming soon, if, if what we're hearing from a vaccination standpoint is true and that the Pfizer vaccine will be available for students ages five to 11, uh, beginning in November, um, that probably changes a lot of the conversations that we're having regarding COVID in schools. I know that, that some of the conversations here was, when is enough enough? Um, when vaccines are available to all our kids, I think that changes the conversation a great deal.
Harold, I, I kind of want to build, excuse me, I'm kind of close to that microphone. I want to build on what you said when you said about the seven-day look back instead of the 14-day. I kind of feel the same way about the, the masks for two weeks. I'm not sure why we couldn't do one week and then use that reflective data then if we need to continue to the next week. Again, just to give us some flexibility, um, with that.
You're talking about it in terms of if we go to a, if we would have to revert back, then instead of a two-week mask, you go to a one-week.
Yeah, we just do one and then we take another look and see, because it can vary. I mean, it might spike one week and then be back down. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree with you, Julie. I think that's a wise add.
I, I also support that. And like he said, I had talked to him today about that. So I think that's, the way you phrase that there is even, um, a better addition. Yeah.
Susan or Linda, did you have anything else to add?
I don't think so. I don't think seven to 14 days. Sometimes seven days is worse than 14. But, you know, it's okay. I mean, it still's okay.
And I, I just had, you, when you said one week, were you talking about the one-week cycle? Or were you talking about the mask would be worn for one week?
The mask would be worn for one week instead of the two weeks because we're going to do a seven-day look back. So I, I just, in case those numbers are a little bit higher because we have less data.
I just, I just heard it now. Yes.
Than just doing the one week. That way we're not tied into that.
So we would be changing both of, we would have, stick with what you say here, but we would change it to the one-week cycle and the mask for one week and then re.
Yeah, should, yeah, should mask come back, it would only be basically a five-school day period.
Okay, perfect. I, I think those are both good points.
Now, here's, here's a caveat that I don't know that we want to go here or not. But when Susan brings up the point that sometimes when you have more data, we're going to have a lower number because you have more data. How much of a difficulty would it be in assessing our data if we did the lesser of two weeks or one week?
Oh, it's, I mean, it's not.
Does that make sense? I mean, okay, we look at, we look at one week, but let's say it, it's high this week. Well, let's do a two-week look back and see if that changes our data.
Yeah.
Because it could, because we would have different numbers.
So we would take the lower of.
Right. Because that would make sense to me, right? I mean, because I, I mean, I see why we're saying the seven days, but then when we have more. I mean, because, I mean, I see why we're saying the seven days, but then when we have more, less data, then our numbers can be inflated.
I see.
Yeah, and so in essence, what you're saying is that if we see a, a minimal spike that would have taken us, that if we had been looking at a two-week period before, we wouldn't have been there.
Right.
So the lesser of one week or two weeks.
Right. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I just think we especially want to have flexibility to pivot.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And in this plan, hopefully, we don't have to put it into place, but at least we know we have a plan, in case we should, should need to. I think that makes parents, you know, feel very comfortable, um, so that they have that knowledge of what's going to happen.
And the whole point of this is to lessen quarantines, and to keep kids in school, and to avoid a school shutdown.
Yep.
The whole purpose of, of it is that.
Any other changes? Are we ready to take action on this from what we said, or do we need to? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I, I will.
So how about this? How about I, how about I, uh, recommend a motion, and then somebody could say?
Yes, do that, because I can't see the acceptance.
Okay, go for it.
So, the motion would be to approve the mandate as provided, based upon a one-week cycle, uh, with mask being worn for one week, after the numbers being recommended in the lesser of a one-week cycle or a two-week cycle, with, uh, administrative oversight at 6%.
Yes.
In that same one-week or two-week cycle.
Okay. Does, does somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Everybody wants to be in on it. All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0. All right, next, we have the field event area bids. Seems like so long ago that we talked about this last.
I feel like this whole board meeting is kind of like cleaning up things that have been just like, it's the Florida hanging Chad situation, right? From, if anybody remembers Al, was that Al Gore back in the day?
Al Gore, yes, Al Gore.
So this was a, a, a conversation that existed in June of last year, uh, when we approved the track contract. Uh, we won't talk about the track, because there's, there's water under the bridge, and we've moved on. Our track's beautiful, and our, our turf surfaces are beautiful. Uh, but one of the conversations was, we also addressed the field area portions, uh, in and around, uh, the, the stadium. So, uh, there are actual several pieces, uh, and components that were identified. This would be the first of, of several of those. Uh, what this was, if you remember the RFP, was redoing the shot put pits. It'd actually be done in, in kind of an hourglass figure, with four throwing lanes, instead of the two that we currently have. Thus, we can have middle school and high school kids practicing in the same area. We can also begin to utilize our throwing staff, uh, at high school and middle school together, as everybody throws from the center out, and we can, so we can have all of our kids. It's a safety issue that goes along there. The other piece is to extend the long jump, um, pits, uh, currently, the long jump and triple jump pits. Uh, currently, one of the conversations that we have, if you, had, if you remember, was that when the middle school wanted to run both directions in an event, that some of our kids were far superior to others, and they would, they would extend the lane and, and make it difficult for us to be able to do. So this would extend that lane, provide us a, some additional opportunities, uh, to run both directions within any event, and maybe speed up that process a little bit, as well as fix some of the issues that we just have. Our, our field areas are just not very nice, to be completely honest with you. So, the RFP went out, it was out for, uh, about a month. Uh, we only had two bids that came back, the Gunter Construction Company and Lloyd Builders. Uh, our recommendation would be that we approve Lloyd Builders to address, uh, the field area needs. If this is approved tonight, I can call Josh Walker tomorrow, and he said that they could start tomorrow. So very quick turnaround on this, if we can get going. You'll also see two, um, or four, I think, four other additions in your packet, um, that are the shot toeboard, shot circle, those types of things. When, when they, uh, addressed their bid with, uh, with Gil, the company that we would order these from, uh, Gil identified upgrades to shot put circles and some of the things that went around it. Uh, and they provided that to us at an increased cost of, I think, like $2,800 or something like that. We had conversations with both ADs and track coaches. Neither thought that the upgrades were needed, that what we put in place was going to be just fine for what we needed to accomplish. And so there was no recommendation to accept the upgrades. So just accepting the bid as is would be the recommendation, recommendation today for $79,000.
Any questions for Dr. Cobb's? We've had quite some, we've had quite some time to review these proposals, so.
I, I have one question. Feel that we have learned a lot from the track situation. So now I come to you asking, is Lloyd Builders doing the work themselves, or are they having other people do the work?
I, Lloyd Builders always subcontract, so I would imagine they're going to subcontract at least pieces of it.
Do we know who is going to be doing it?
I don't know who their subcontractors are.
I do like the fact that Lloyd Builders is local, and that they are also, well, when, since they're local, they're going to have skin in the game. And they're not going to want that to be tarnished, don't you think, Harold?
That's probably true. As long as you don't make me run track, I'll be in favor of it.
Yeah.
Is there a, is there a motion to approve the bid, uh, from Lloyd Builders for $79,000?
Madam President, I move that we approve the bid from Lloyd Builders for $79,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your, all in favor, raise your hand. And that passes 5-0 as well. All right, you've all been presented with a personnel report. Is there a motion to approve said report?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, raise your hand. That passes 5-0 as well, and we are down to announcements.
All right, I feel like if you've ever been to the airport, and you're walking by, and you see the person that's on the, uh, the, the little elevator type of a ramp that goes along, and they like just go speeding past you, and they're walking the same speed, I feel like that's what happened to us this week. Uh, so we haven't had a lot of announcements for the last few weeks, and now there's a ton of them. All right, so a lot of good things have happened if we got to that time of the year. I think, um, just as a reminder to you, the candidate forum is on Thursday, uh, right here in the PAC, uh, between 6:00 and 9:00 PM. Uh, so if, uh, if you happen to be, uh, up for office, whether through the school board, uh, through city commission, county commission, I think they've probably already communicated to you, uh, what, uh, what the options are for that night. Um, so hopefully, we see, we see everybody here. I do want to congratulate some people. Justine Dugan will be the, um, the USD 290 representative for the Kansas Horizon Award this year. That is an award that is given to, uh, the best first-year teachers in the state of Kansas. Uh, so, uh, Justine's first year was last year, and so she'll be our, our, um, representative for that award. She's done a fantastic job, um, and, and is going to be a great representative for us. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Whitaker, uh, who was identified as the National Renaissance Staffalty of the Month this month. National across the entire United States. Uh, certainly, we get some love from Renaissance, uh, because of the amazing things that take place here at Ottawa High School. If you remember, I think last year, we also had a National Student of the Month, um, and certainly deservedly so. Uh, we will meet with Echo again this week, and we'll continue our vaping conversations, and you guys have been updated on that, uh, multiple times, and we'll just kind of see how this thing goes. But we'll, we'll continue the conversations and, and see what we need to do. I did want to let you know that in the, in the update, you'll see a revised admin handbook. We changed some things that, um, were probably not, um, up to our policies in there, so have been having multiple conversations with our, uh, with our council, and making sure that, uh, that our handbook for administrators, um, not only meets our policy, but meets the guidelines of the law. You may remember that you've not, um, approved an admin handbook since like 2018. Uh, those things have, have seemed to have gotten away, uh, from our district, so we'll get that back in place. Crisis plan has been revised and revisited. We've updated it with the, um, with the suicidal ideation piece, uh, as recommended by Green Bush in the review of our crisis plan. I will have that ready for you in the update at the next board meeting. I will ask for it to be approved, so that we can begin doing the other things that we need to do, uh, to get that in the hands of all of our staff, and, and make sure they're trained in all of those things. Uh, we're starting work already. I know that it's only October, but we'll begin the work on the calendar for next year already. We'll start, uh, that with our admin team tomorrow. And then, of course, lots of congratulations. We have an FFA team that just qualified for nationals for, uh, land judging, uh, so congratulations to them. Uh, Johanna Yon and Gracie Howard, Emma Kane, all qualified for state tennis, uh, the other day. We had an OHS chess team that just finished second out of 43 schools, uh, at the ARMA tournament. Uh, and then just today, Erin Smith and Aubrey Vasquez, just qualified for state golf. Uh, and so the last thing is, again, the amazing things that our students do, uh, in our district for our community. The OHS food drive through the mobile food pantry is going on right now. Uh, it's, uh, for Thanksgiving. Uh, anything that you have, uh, available that you want to, um, to donate or spend your time with, uh, can be identified through the high school here, uh, by November 9th, as we, as we begin preparing for that. So if you, if you want to spend some time, you want to donate, whatever it happens to be, we can work through those things, and we appreciate your time and support. That's all I've got.
Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that passes 5-0.
Thank you, everybody.